Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the CalSTRS CIO Search Committee Meeting. Jennifer, would you please take the role?
Sure. For the State Controller, Ms. Gallegos?
Here.
For the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Garfinkel?
Here.
Mr. Prizan?
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Here.
Mr. Tang?
Here.
Mr. Gunning?
Here.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Ruffino?
Present.
Chairperson Keely, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Jennifer. So we have two action items. The first is the approval of the agenda, and I entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. It's been moved by Ms. Yamamoto, seconded by Mr. Tang. Without objection, today's agenda has been approved. The second action item is the consent agenda action approval of the minutes of the February 5th, 2024, and April 11th, 2024, Search Committee Meeting, open session. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Mr. Gunning, seconded by Ms. Yamamoto. Mr. Ruffino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a quick point of clarification to ask the minutes. The minutes does not reflect that the observer...
Other board members were present, but not during the deliberations, and they were not present in the room. Is that important to note that? I'm not sure. To the minutes, it shows other members present, but it did not... Maybe my recollection is...
I think it's clear, but I'd be happy to go back because I know we had some exchanges with Karen. We listed that the other board members were present and how they were present. But I believe we also reflected that they weren't present.
Yeah, I believe we put "observed" for the listing of the members, and then if you read the text of the conversation, it notes that the interviews occurred with everybody, and then the scoring and the discussions occurred with only the members of the committee.
I missed it. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. No apologies necessary.
Keeping us honest.
Karen, about the minutes.
No apology necessary. Thank you, Mr. Ruffino. So with that clarification, without objection, item two, the approval of the minutes from those two dates have been approved. Procedurally, we are going to go into closed session where we will be interviewing the two finalists for the CIO position. We will not be reporting out today from closed session. We will report out on closed. The intention is to report out in open session on Thursday from our closed session deliberations today. So with that, we will go into closed session. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the CalSTRS Board Meeting. The Board has met in closed session, and we have one item to report out of closed At our finalist CIO meeting, the Board has identified the candidate to become the next CIO for CalSTRS. Pending final background checks and the acceptance of an offer, the candidate's name will be made known internally and externally. I want to thank everybody who participated in that process that helped us successfully navigate and work through that over several years of succession planning. Countless people inside the organization has made this a successful process, one that we can all be very proud of. From the communications team, our support staff that supports the Board, our general counsel, our governance team, our governance advisor, our chief executive officer, the head of HR, countless people have been part of this process and have made this a successful process, and I couldn't be more proud of the entire organization, including all of my colleagues that have helped us to get to this important decision. And we look forward to the final two steps of the background check, the acceptance of an offer, and the announcement of the candidate's name. With that, there are no other items to report out of closed session. And Jennifer, do you want to take the role, please?
I'd be happy to. For the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Garfinkel? Mr. Prizan?
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Here.
Mr. Tang?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
Ms. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Gunning?
Here.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Ruffino?
Present.
For the Director of Finance, Ms. Peralta?
Present.
And for the State Controller, Ms. Gallegos?
Present.
Chairperson Keely, you have a quorum, and I have a short statement on public comment.
Yes, please.
The CalSTRS Board meetings are live web-streamed, video-archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the Board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there's not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the Chair. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the Board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. And since the March Teachers Retirement Board meeting, CalSTRS received four letters asking the CalSTRS Board to oppose the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act.
Thanks, Ms. Yamamoto. So are we going to take the role now? Oh, we did that already. We just did that. I just had a little black... Yeah, it happens, you know?
It does.
No, no, no.
It's just a good opportunity to have a little grace for myself.
Good to know.
Practice grace for myself. All right. With that, let's turn the first item over to our Chief Executive Officer, Cassandra Littknock, for the first item.
Keely, this is the time of year where the Board has their annual election for Chair and Vice Chair of the Teachers Retirement Board pursuant to Education Code. And so with that, I'm happy to open it up to nominations from the Board members.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yeah, I wanted to go ahead and nominate my colleague Denise Bradford for Chair of the Board.
Great, and thanks. Any other comments, nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Madam Vice Chair.
And now for the Vice Chair of the Board, I would be happy to accept any nominations.
Wait a second, one second. Let me just do this. Move you out here. Madam Chair-elect.
I would like to nominate Karen Yamamoto for Vice Chair.
Second. It's been nominated and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Yamamoto.
She is leaving, and Karen's coming over here. Do you want to speak from here or over there? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
It matches. You need the anchor chip.
Thank you.
I did just want to make a brief comment that, you know, one of the things I am most proud of on the Board is the way that, you know, our electeds have really been focused on our retirement security and the well-being of our teachers. And so it's really exciting to kind of... I just really appreciate Harry's leadership on our Board. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you so much for your service to the teachers of the state of California, and excited about continuing to work together. But thank you for your leadership, Harry, and really excited for Denise and Karen to have this new opportunity to lead our Board. So excited to partner with you.
I just want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to chair this Board the last few years. It's been a great honor. I love you all very much, and I thank you for that opportunity. I want to thank the staff for tolerating me and putting up with me. I love all of you very much as well. I respect all of you, and I hope I've demonstrated that in my behavior and my actions. I see you as colleagues, and I see you first and foremost as human beings that have full lives and who serve our members extremely, extremely well. And you've all... Many of you have taught me quite a bit. And I want to thank Denise for being a terrific Vice Chair, a friend, and I'm so excited to see her lead this Board and this organization along with Cassandra. You're the right person at the right time, and I love you very much. Thank you.
Love you too, Harry. Thank you. Who knew Dana was going to rub off on all of us? All choked up. I just want to thank my colleagues for putting this trust in me. I'm very proud to be leading the Board and continuing to secure the financial future of our California educators. I really appreciate my teacher colleagues especially, Harry and Sharon and Dana, for raising me up through retirement, because they literally did. When I started in the Retirement Committee with CTA, I knew nothing. I had never even been to a CalSTRS meeting about my own retirement, and I'm looking forward to all of us working together to continue educating our teachers about their retirement. And thank you to both CalSTRS staff and CTA staff for helping me learn so much and for always being there to guide and talk to. It's very much appreciated, and that's probably the most you'll ever hear me say. So let's move on. Item number eight, compensation review policy.
Good morning, and thank you, and congratulations, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, Crystal Turco, CalSTRS staff. This is an action item which was presented as informational at the March meeting relative to the Labor Benchmark Study for positions covered by the Board's compensation policy. I am returning today, joined hopefully virtually, by Michael Oak from McLoggan, to present the results associated with the study. To be clear, this is not a policy update. Rather, it's following the Board's established policy and compensation program objectives by supporting the Board's policy to position staff compensation to stay in line with the competitive market. The last Labor Benchmark Study was completed in 2021, at which time the Board took action to adjust the salary ranges for the General Counsel, the Deputy Chief Investment Officer, as well as establish the compensation for two new classifications, the Senior Investment Director and the Senior Portfolio Manager. Because the previously mentioned classifications did have adjustments in 2021, there will not be recommendations brought forward today for those four classifications. The last incentive opportunities were approved by the Board in 2019. However, for most classifications, there haven't been salary... base salary changes for several years, including three classifications whose salary ranges have not moved in over 10 years. So before I turn this over to Michael, there's a couple of highlights I would like to bring to the Board's attention this morning. Again, just for clarification, this information is not an update to an individual's compensation. Rather, it is recommendations that address the salary ranges for the classifications, the classifications that are under the Board's authority. As a reminder, one of the Board's functions is to evaluate base salary adjustments for the CEO and the CIO at the July meeting. All other salary adjustments are delegated to the CEO and follow a process that is aligned to the individual's performance. The data is provided by McLoggan and is based upon the Board's established comparator groups for executive and investment positions. The Board went through a thoughtful and strategic process in 2013 to establish the comparator groups, and Michael will discuss in more detail McLoggan's methodology for assembling the data. So with that, I would like to hopefully turn it over to Michael to support the Board through this item.
There he is. Great. Go ahead, Michael. Yep, we sure can. Go ahead.
Okay. I can't see the presentation, but if you wanted to flip a slide, and this, I believe... Really, I'm squinting here. I think that it just looks at the positions that are being covered, which, as we just mentioned, are positions that have changed to the range a number of years. That's a much better view. So just as a reminder of what your policy is, which is what we use to assemble the data for the executive positions, there is a 67% weighting to leading U.S. public funds and a 33% weighting to a broad group of private sector investment management organizations. That includes investment advisory firms, insurance companies, banks, pensions, endowments, foundations, et cetera. And then to the investment positions, you have a slightly different peer group, which includes leading institutional investors, which includes both U.S. and Canadian public funds, U.S. corporate fund sponsors, and private sector investment management firms. The private sector investment management firms for this cut is AUM-adjusted, so it's 100 to 500 billion. We are basically excluding organizations that are substantially smaller than you and substantially larger than you. And then at the bottom here is just a screenshot from your policy that says you target the median, or more specifically, cash compensation opportunities will be targeted at the 50th percentile of the Board-approved peer group. And then the next couple of pages, we go into some more details. So here is the list of the 67% weighting for executive positions. Again, this is the U.S. public funds with the 67% weighting. You can see here the median of this group is less than half your size at 117 billion, and percent internally managed is 53%. That number's a little bit difficult to interpret because that could be passive, that could be active, so on and so forth, but factually speaking, about half of those assets are internally managed at the median firm. And then the next page is just a summary of the 33% weighting to the private sector. There are 350 total organizations, which includes 43 banks, and these would be the investment management arms. So it's like JP Morgan Asset Management, but not JP Morgan Bank. Insurance companies, same deal there. It's the investment, so like prudential investment management, so like the investment within the insurance company, not the other insurance executives or positions. Investment advisory firms, so these are the firms that you'd expect, Vanguard's Fidellities, et cetera, and then endowments, foundations, and pension funds. So here, the median assets are 31.7 billion, and the high quartiles at 123 billion. Any questions on those peer groups? And then if none, then here is again just a summary. The top of the page is the leading institutional... Excuse me. Leading institutional investors, which includes U.S. and Canadian pension funds, corporate fund sponsors, and then the private sector is 74 investment management firms between 100 and 500 billion. Next page. So here's where we start looking at the data, and I will try to go at an appropriate speed, but if you need me to go slower or faster, just yell at me, and I'll do my best. So I'm just focusing on the chart because I know that's probably where a lot of folks' eyes are jumping right away. If we look at the system actuary as an example, the last row, your current midpoint of your range, so not the individual person, but the current midpoint of the range is 260,000, and it has a maximum incentive opportunity of 30% of base. So 260 plus 30% is 338. So that's T cash or total cash compensation. And that compares to the market, which has a median base of 272,000. So from a base salary perspective, you're 5% off. Not a huge deal there, just from a base perspective. When you factor in the cash compensation, however, the market median total cash is 375,000, so you are 10% below market from a total cash perspective. And then we see a similar story. I won't read off the other numbers, but the CFO, COO, and CEO are all double digits below the market median, and you can see those in those columns labeled VAR for advanced to market. Any questions on this? Great. For the investment... Was there a question? All right. My screen changed to look at the Board, so I can't see the chart numbers anymore, but this is the same... There it is, thanks. This is the same data for the investment positions. So again, I won't read it to you, but you can kind of see those circled squared-off numbers that the portfolio manager and associate portfolio manager, their base salaries are 12% below market each. And then from a total comp perspective, you see a negative 6 and negative 20. And then similarly, for the Chief Investment Officer, investment directors, variance to market total cash over on the right is a negative 7 and a negative 12. Next page. So this is our recommendations, which are basically purely based on aligning your range for the position with your stated compensation philosophy. So hopefully, it's fairly straightforward. For the Chief Executive Officer, our recommendation is to increase the midpoint from 400,000 to 475,000, so that range would be shown here, 386 to 564. And with the incentive opportunity, that would be a maximum total cash range of 965 to 1.4 with 1188 as the midpoint. And then similarly, for the Chief Operating Officer, increase the midpoint from 250 to 300, and you see those ranges there on the page. Any questions? Next page. So for the CFO, increase from 250 to 280, and the system actuary, increase the midpoint from 260 to 280. And again, the corresponding ranges in total cash are below. So here, we're basically just kind of taking all the data that we just looked at and kind of condensing it to a single chart, so you can kind of see that the... Again, I'll pick on the system actuary in the bottom. The current midpoint is 260, which is that 5% to market that we saw before. The blended market salary is that 272. The proposed data over to the right is the gray highlight in the middle. That's the midpoint, it's 280. So from a base salary perspective, you would be 3% above market. And then at the bottom of the page, when we factor in the incentive opportunity, that becomes 364,000, which is 3% below median. So your base salary, a hair above, your total cash, a hair below, if you were to adopt the recommended change to the ranges there. And again, the other positions are here, shown on the page. I know there's a lot of data here. Hopefully, that going through the system actuary was helpful, but any questions on this page or anything that you'd like to explain in more detail? Do you hear any?
Did you have anything else to add? We're good? Okay. I... Sorry. Investment management positions now. Okay, we're good. Go ahead, Michael.
So for the investment management positions, the screen's probably updating, so I can't quite read the numbers here, but same format that we just saw. This is our recommendation to bring you aligned with your policy, so from 510 to 520 on the CIO, and from 327 to 355 on the Investment Director. And just note, both of these, these are two positions that haven't been reviewed since 2013. Next slide. Similarly, 215 to 240 for the portfolio managers, and for the associate portfolio managers, 150 to 175. And again, this table just kind of brings it all together. So again, the associate portfolio manager at the bottom, increase from 150, which is 12% below market, to 175, which would be 2% above market from a base salary perspective. And then factoring cash compensation at the bottom, you're currently 20% below market. If you were to adopt the recommended range of that 175 midpoint, that would bring you to 263 total cash, which is negative 6 or 6% below median from a total cash perspective. Any questions?
That includes our presentation. We're both happy to take questions from the Board, and thank you for your patience conducting a hybrid presentation.
No problem. We have several Board members in the queue. First, Mr. Prizan.
Well, thank you very much for this presentation, and I want to just say that the staff's recommendation here is based on policy and the philosophy of the policy that we've adopted as a Board, that we want to have our employees at this level make median. And then yesterday, I think the highlight of yesterday was that, you know, we're so proud of this organization and the team that we've developed. It's a team that's working here not just because of money. They're working because of their commitment to the educators of California. On the other hand, to attract good people and to keep good people, you at least have to be at median over time. You can't ignore that. We live in a competitive economic place, and, you know, we cannot ignore the fact that these people need to have a fair and just compensation. It's consistent with the policy, the recommendation. It's not beyond anything other than median. We've got a great team here. I don't want to see us lose anybody or have the inability to attract more good people. So I move the adoption of the recommendation of staff.
Okay. Mr. Tang?
And I'll second that. Question?
Okay, we have a couple more questions. Ms. Peralta?
Yes, hi. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation, and, you know, I understand this was an information item last time, and appreciate you guys, you know, kind of taking a moment and hearing it, and I wanted to thank Crystal specifically for taking some time, particularly with finance, to kind of go over and look through some of the pieces. That being said, you know, I think obviously from finances perspective, I think we still have just some concerns in general around some of the comparative groups, and we've talked with staff about that. Obviously, PERS is in there, but, you know, we do have other state agency executives too that there... I don't know that that necessarily was weighted in, so just kind of wanted to note that. I think the other piece to it, and this probably won't surprise anybody, but, you know, we recognize this is just a conversation around range and is not necessarily indicative of an actual salary increase at this time, but we would just note that, you know, when we talk about the ranges, we would then kind of caution, looking currently right now at what the state is looking at around the fiscal condition, that looking at salaries that are 8 to potentially 20% higher in the current kind of fiscal condition for the state just might not be the right timing, given that this is a public entity. So, you know, I think the other thing too is, and I guess this is more of a question for staff, is maybe really around that recruitment and retention element, and, you know, Bill, you mentioned making sure we can continue to recruit and retain, and I think it would be nice to know how long we have... Have we historically had an issue, you know, recruiting and retaining in these positions? And I think particularly from outside, when you look at the comparatives, are those who we're seeking to recruit when we look at these positions in the future? I know it's not a question for now because the positions aren't open, but I think more of just a question when we're looking at comparatives and then indicating that we want to make sure we're competitive with recruitment. So again, I think from finances perspective, we're just a little bit concerned about the levels and the current fiscal environment, but recognizing that we're looking at a range thing. We're not talking about actual salary increases at the moment.
May I respond? Thank you for your question, and I would love to either meet separately or provide you some additional information, but I do have some information that I can share relative to recruitment. I think as the investment branch specifically has implemented on the collaborative investment model, they obviously have been provided resources to execute on that strategy, and especially for the associate portfolio manager and the portfolio manager levels, they've had an extraordinarily difficult time in some cases in some asset classes. they've had an extraordinarily difficult time in some cases in some asset classes recruiting for talent. I think about SIS, I think about private equity, where they're ultimately able to hire people, but it's taking a very long time to find talent. And then the flip side of that is the retention aspect. And I think as far as the stability of the organization and seeing, you know, that continuation of the execution on strategy, we have, obviously, there are some incumbents in classifications that are single incumbent classifications, and they've been here for a while. However, for some of the staff, we have experienced turnover. We have experienced turnover, I think about the investment branch again, where they're leaving the organization for better opportunities. And typically, those opportunities are related to compensation. But I am more than happy to meet with you and talk to you more in depth about some of the recruitment challenges that we've had, for sure.
Chair, can I just ask, and I guess, I appreciate that. That's good information to know. I'm wondering, you know, obviously, this is talking about a base salary range, but it doesn't necessarily take into consideration some of the other, I guess, consider some of the non-fiscal or non-pay elements, for example, because, you know, we are a state entity around that job security, you know, the fact that there's some flexibility in the hybrid work, you know, environment and sort of that work-life balance. So, you know, are those things also that we need to maybe be considering and factoring in, maybe both with recruitment, but then also just looking at it as the total compensation? That's non-pay, but it still should be considered, I think, as part of the incentives.
Yeah, a number of years ago, I think it was 2017, 2017, that question did come up. And we did, at the time, ask McLoggan to take a look at exactly what you're saying, the pension benefits, you know, some of the other benefits that we have as state employees. And I can share that information with you. At the time, it wasn't enough of an impact, although important, to justify a lower incentive or a lower base salary range.
Thank you. I appreciate that history.
Of course.
Ms. Hendricks?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So we're aligning the ranges to be consistent with our policy, and I heard you, Michael, mention like the date 2013. So some of these have been, it sounds like, out of alignment of our policy for some time. So are there repercussions for that? And then, because in general, I think we want to be in compliance with our policies, right? So I was just, was curious if you could speak to, or maybe it's to you, in terms of if we've been sort of out of compliance of that policy, this decision today is to kind of align the range consistent with our policy?
You know, I am not the governance professional or executive or expert for the organization, but I do think it is important to follow what your policies state. The, you know, you're going to see me again in a few items. We are resurrecting the compensation committee. And I do think the comparator groups is probably something that the committee needs to take a look at, because that is something that comes up year after year. But to your, I think your question about the labor benchmark study, I do think we're very transparent with staff when we hire them. We share the policy with them, so they know what to expect. And I think keeping your promises and making sure that, you know, what you have documented in your policy is what you're going to do, I think is important.
Yeah, my concern was more around the board. Sorry, I lost my mic, but. The board's compliance, not necessarily what we're communicating to folks that we're hiring. That was more. That's okay. That's okay. I'm good, Madam Chair. Yep.
Okay. Did you? Okay. Seeing no further questions, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second for 8A. Roll call, I believe?
Mr. Garfinkel? Mr. Prazant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Aye.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Obstand.
And Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 8B.
Thank you, Michael. This also is an action item, which was previously presented in March. I am presenting for the board's consideration, an amendment to the compensation policies administrative procedure by eliminating the provision that limits the annual base salary increases for the general counsel. And just to give you a little historical on this, this was put in place in 2017. It was done so at the time when the education code was modified to add the chief operating officer and the chief financial officer to the board's salary setting authority. The legislature actually included language that limited any incumbent COO and CFO from getting salary increases more than 10% the first year, and I believe 5% every subsequent year. That was done to prevent pension spiking. That provision, for all intents and purposes, has sunset, because you would never have an incumbent in either position that that would apply to. However, the board ended up taking similar action relative to the general counsel at that same meeting. There again was a labor benchmark study, and there was a significant recommendation for a base salary range adjustment for the general counsel position. And I believe the board had similar concerns about pension spiking, and then put language into the admin procedures to limit annual increases for the general counsel to 5%. It has had unintended consequences, having this pay inequity in your policy, and it really kind of conflicts with your goals of targeting the median. It also limits the delegation that you've provided to the CEO. You've provided the CEO delegation to make salary adjustments in line with the parameters of the administrative procedures. And so I think it is appropriate, and it is my recommendation, that you do consider making that amendment and removing that restriction. So that is my conclusion. I am happy to take questions from the board.
Okay. Mr. Prazant?
Once again, recognizing that this is an authority that has always, has been delegated, it's consistent with our policy, it is fair and just under the circumstances, I move the adoption of the staff's recommendation.
Mr. Keely?
Second.
That's it? Okay. I was waiting for more. Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board? Okay, public comments?
There are no members of the public in the queue.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further questions, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Prazant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Aye.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we wait for the next group. Ms. Yamamoto has some comments to make. Hi.
I didn't have a chance to say thank you. Everything happened so quickly, and we had some movement, but I really wanted to thank Harry for being the chair and leading this board so eloquently, and Denise for doing all the things that she does. I just wanted to, you know, just say thank you for having the confidence in me to be the vice chair. And I have big shoes to fill, and I promise to put on extra socks if I need to, to make sure that I do that. So thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Okay, welcome onto some actuarial evaluations. We have a few today.
So, good morning, members of the board. Congratulations, Ms. Bradford and Ms. Yamamoto, on your new positions. And I want to stop and just say thank you, Harry, very much for what you've done since you've been on the board. So it's been very good, and it's been very helpful for the system. And the way we've been treated, and your actions have been excellent. So I want to thank you again publicly for that. And so with that, we'll move to the evaluations. So every year, we present an actual evaluation of defined benefit plan and the rest of the plan. So we're going to do that today. Before we go right into that, I want to introduce you a special guest. So we've given Scott the day off, and he's still a part of your team. I want to introduce Julie Smith, and she's at the end. So Julie's been with Milliman for 15 years, and for 14 years, she's worked on the CalSTRS account. And so to the extent, and she manages really the production of the valuation and the numbers in particular, and all the details. So to the extent that the numbers are good, and everything has been working well, it's Julie, so you look at her. But she, right, she has managed that. And so I thought it was appropriate that she comes to the board and meet the board and the people that she's been working for. So, and Julie will be part of the presentation today, but I just thought it was appropriate that she come and meet the board for the first time. This is her first time here at CalSTRS, and I think she said it was the first time here in Sacramento. So I just wanted Julie to be met. With that, we'll move to the actual evaluation, and I'm going to turn it over to Nick Collier.
All right, thanks, Rick. And that was a great introduction for Julie. She said everything I was going to say, so I'm going to move straight to the evaluation results. Short story here, it's a pretty quiet year for the defined benefit program. Everything is basically overall positive results. We're kind of moving along, has the funding plan kind of envisioned from year to year. So trying to keep our presentation short, but as always, we're happy to take questions. So moving forward. So as you can see, a couple of the key things we look at here are the funded status of the DB program, which we'll talk about now, and then the contribution rates, which I'll talk about later. First, looking at the 2023 valuation results, show a 75.9% funded ratio. That represents about $273 billion in smoothed assets and about $360 billion in the actual obligation. So that works out to 75.9%. That's up about 1.5% from last year. As I said, it's really just, it's really the contributions that are coming in under the funding plan that are helping move the funding status along this year. A lot of times, there's investments or other things, but this year was really driven by those contributions. There were a couple of things you remember. We talked to you in January, we adopted new assumptions. Those new assumptions are factored in. Also, not always necessarily great news for pension plan, but good news for teachers, there were actually higher than assumed salary increases. That also had an impact, but really, the assumption that salary increases basically offsets, so really not too much in the other factors. So really, just those contributions driving that. And that's also the same is true on the unfunded actual obligation, which is a shortfall between the actual obligation and the assets. As you can see, that decreased by about $2 billion from $88.6 billion last year to $86.6 billion this year. And as I said, that's just driven by those contributions to pay things down. And you might say, well, there was a lot of contributions coming in. How come it only went down $2 billion? Well, obviously, one of the big things, obviously, you've got to pay for the benefits that are being earned, but also interest on that unfunded amount. But we're over the hump, where we're actually paying more, and we're driving, we're paying more than our interest, so we're driving down our unfunded actual obligation. So that's good. So moving to the next page. As all of you veterans of the board are aware, the, under the funding plan, we have the unfunded actual obligation, that $86.6 billion is broken down into three pieces. First piece being the state piece, and that went down about $2 billion to $8.4 billion this year. The employer's share went down, but only very fractionally, from $78.7 billion to $78.6 billion. Now, that shouldn't be a surprise, and we've talked about it in the past. Due to the nature of the way the funding plan works, the state's results, for better or worse, are going to have, they're going to have bigger swings, either up or down, and the employer's piece generally tends to stay more stable, and that was true once again this year. Moving to the unallocated unfunded actual obligation, that's everything else. So all the assets that are, go to the employers and the state share, and all the obligation that doesn't go to the employers and the state share. And there's no dedicated funded source, which as actuaries concerns us a little bit. But on the bright side, as you see, we have a negative unfunded amount, which in actual speak is actually a good thing, because that is a surplus. We have slightly more assets right now than we have actual obligation. So that lack of funding isn't currently an issue, but definitely, we recommend that be looked into in the future. So kind of looking historically and looking forward at the funded status, back in about 10 years ago, when we were doing the initial calculations of the funding plan, and we were trying to figure out how we could get where we were back then, which was about 65% funded, to get to 100% funded by 2046. We did the calculations, and if you remember, there was graded changes in the contribution rates and a lot going on. So it made a very slow progress and then started to grow, and you can see that gradual process represented by the red line. So that was back where we said, back in 2013, this is how we thought we were going to achieve full funding. Now, obviously, things don't go exactly according to actuaries' projections. So this, the blue line represents what has actually happened, or at least for the 10 years up till 2023. And you see, for about the first eight years, it tracked pretty closely to what the funding plan was on the original projections. Back in 2021, you remember, we had a great return. That bumped up our funded ratio. And now we're, so we were up about plus 5% from the original projections, and we're even slightly higher than that as of 2023. And looking forward, we continue ahead on our projections, and we're projected to pay off the unfunded actual obligation, assuming all assumptions are met about two or three years earlier than the original projection. So overall, positive picture. So as I said, obviously, the funded status is critical, but really, the decision the board has upon it is on the contribution rate side. Obviously, there's the contribution rates that the state makes and the employers. So what we do is when we calculate a specific number of what the state contribution rate is under the valuation policy, and we do that for the state to pay off the unfunded actual obligation that it's responsible for by 2046, so we calculate that number. That number is less than 8.328%, as you can see by the no column. The board practice and what staff's recommendation, and Dave's going to talk about that a little bit more later, is to keep the rate at the current 8.328% and not lower it as would be possible based on the calculated rate. If the board maintains that the rate, the current rate going forward of 8.328%, and all assumptions are met, then the state piece is projected to be paid off by 2048. On the employer's side, very similar picture. The employer rate is currently 19.10%. Our calculation, our calculated rate to fund up by 2046 is less, so no rate increase is needed. And once again, as we talked about, the less, a lot less volatility on the employer's side. In this case, it's not necessarily a great thing, but it takes a lot longer for the employers to pay off the unfunded budget, we're projecting at 2044, still better than 2046. So that kind of covers the key results of the valuation, and I'm going to turn it back over to Dave.
Thank you, Nick. Good morning, everyone. And again, congratulations to our new chair and vice chair. It's going to be a pleasure working with you. Just to add to this, so just, so again, this year, we are recommending to keep the contribution rates for the state and the employers at the existing level. And just so, this is the fourth year that you have the ability to set the employer rate. And we have asked you, and you have kept it at the existing level for four years, and I think this is great for employers, because it provides budget stability. So I think- So I think for us going forward, even if we are in a position to lower the contribution rate, especially considering where we are funding-wise, we're still only about 76%. We love keeping it where it is, especially we don't want to be in a position where we lower it to then have to re-increase it later. So before we go to the recommendation, I just want to remind everyone. Remember, in March, we had a discussion on our next progress report to the legislature. I just want to give you an update that we are working on the report. Our first draft is ready. It's going to go through an internal process internally, and once it's finalized, we will make sure that it's available on our website, and a copy will be shared with all of you. And we are on schedule. It should be made available sometime in middle to late June. So that's what I wanted to say on this. So what's in front of you is the recommendation for the defined benefit program. And again, what you adopt, we talked about the 19.1% rate for the employer. If you remember, in statute, there are some base contribution rates that are set in statute. And what you have the authority over is to set the supplemental contribution rates. So those rates here for the state that you see on the screen and for the employer is what is in effect this fiscal year. So we're just recommending you to keep them as is. So it's going to add up to 8.328 for the state to the defined benefit. With that rate, for the employer, it's going to go up to 19.1. And that third rate here, I just want to remind you, this is tied to the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, PEPRA, that was passed in 2013. The 2 at 62 members, their contribution rate might change. It's tied to what we call the normal cost. On an annual basis, you have to approve the normal cost. That rate has barely changed minimally compared to last year. So there will be no changes for the 2% at, for the 2% 62 member contribution rate. But this is a rate that you have to approve on an annual basis. So with this, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the defined benefit program.
I see no, oh, here's a question. There we go. Sharon, go ahead.
David, can you talk a little bit about when the report is out on funding? Do we share that with us? I mean, how do we share that with the legislature or the retirement committee? Or can you talk a little bit about how that? Or do we just publish it and make it accessible?
I think it's sent to the appropriate people at the legislature. We actually were contacted this year by the two main consultants of the retirement committee, the legislature. They wanted potentially us to come speak at a committee this year to provide an update on the progress. And what we offered to them is we told them, our next progress report is coming out soon. Why don't you wait until we publish it? And then we would be more than happy to go at a hearing to talk about it. So we have yet to receive an official request, but it looks like there's an interest at the legislature to receive a verbal update on our report at some point, most likely next fiscal year. And we'll keep you posted. But we are in constant communication with, I would say, with all of the interested parties, including our stakeholders. And as we mentioned to you in March, we intend next fiscal year to start again, to provide education again on our funding plan, how it works. Because it's been 10 years, and as you well know, for several of our member organizations, we have new people in place. We want to make sure everyone understands how well a funded plan is working and why it was needed.
Okay, Ms. Gallegos.
Thank you. I apologize if I missed this, but has this already been built into the budget? So is there any budget impact we have to worry about?
And yes, and my apologies, I should have mentioned it. But yes, since we've been working with the administration and we worked with them last fall, and when the governor released his budget in January, it was anticipated that it was based on the assumption that the board would keep the state contribution rate at the existing levels. So that's what's already been built in the governor's budget.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for always going back and including history. It's really important when we have these conversations. Brian, would you like us to take these one at a time or go through the whole report and approve?
I think for clarification, it's better to take them one at a time. But ultimately, Madam Chair, you are in charge.
I want to be legal. So I would entertain a motion then for 9A.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments?
There are no members of the public in the queue for this item.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, behind B.
Now, we'll move to 9B. And what we'll do is we'll move it, Julie will be presenting the results. We have some slides that cover both the defined benefit supplement and the cash balance. So what we'll do is 9B is the defined benefit supplement. Julie will present the results. We'll have you vote on 9B, and then we'll talk about 9C right after that. So with this, I'll move it along to Julie.
Great. All right. So I'll be starting with the defined benefit supplement program. So this slide, we have, on the left, we have the most recent actual evaluation results as of June 30, 2023. And then on the right, last year's June 30, 2022, for comparison. So the blue bars here are the asset values, and this is equal to the market value of assets. So there can be some fluctuations from year to year. And then the red bars are the actual obligation or liability. So just looking at last year to this year, the funded status increased from 124.1% to 129.6%. And the surplus or the excess of the assets over the liabilities increased from $3.34 billion to $4.14 billion. And the primary reason for this improvement in funded status was a 6.5% return on the underlying asset value. So next, we have the two-step process of how additional earnings credits are determined, and this is based on board policy. So first, we look at the step one threshold, which is 111.3%. And that's essentially 100% target plus a margin that's one standard deviation of the investment portfolio, which was 11.3. So we compare that threshold to the funded ratio before any additional earnings credits. So that's the top of the blue bar on the left. So we compare the 129.6 to the step one threshold, which is the line there, so it's above it. So then we can calculate a step one allocation. So how do you calculate that credit? It's essentially the excess of the investment return assumption of 7% over the 2.09% minimum interest rate. And so that difference is 4.91%. So because there's sufficient assets, 4.91% of additional earnings credit can be allocated after step one. So then, with board policy, there's a second allocation that we look at. So we start with the funded ratio after step one, which is 124%, as represented by the top of the blue bar on the right. And we compare that to the step two threshold, the arrow there going to 122.6. And that is based on two standard deviations over 100%. And so because there's still an excess there, we actually have a step two allocation, a 0.9% available. So then the sum is just the total of these, 4.91% and 0.9 or 5.81%. So slide four, we have this historical additional earnings credits going back to 2011. And on the far right there for 2023, the recommendation is 5.81%, which again, is just the sum of those two allocations from the prior slide. And then only other item to note here is that adopting that would decrease the funded ratio to 123.5% as noted on the bottom there.
Thank you, Julie. So the only thing I would add to this, just since we have some newborn members. When you look at the defined benefit supplement, it's a little bit different than the defined benefit. So you can almost look at the defined benefit supplement. It's a cash balance type program. It's not like a 401K. It's similar to it, but in a sense where it's, members have money in their accounts. And what the board policy says is, over time, we are hoping to be able to credit to these members our assumed return of 7%. So what, but what we also want to do is we don't want to commit to 7% ahead of time. So what we do is we credit them each year an interest rate that is tied to U.S. Treasuries. That's actually an item later on in your item. It's an information consent item. Once a year, you adopt the interest rate we credit to those members' accounts. And it's been, for years, much lower than 7%. Then when we have a surplus like we do right now, we try to give back to the members an amount to kind of give them back that 7%. So that's kind of what the AEC here is. And because the DBS is much better funded, actually, it exceeds a second type of threshold, we're actually giving a little bit more to the members. So that's what's in front of you. And we're asking that you adopt a 5.81% additional earnings credit to the non-retired members of the defined benefit supplement program. So that's, I just want you to know that this only applies to those who have yet to retire as of today. So that is the motion in front of you.
Okay. Mr. Tang?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board?
I just have one more clarification. So when you say the ones that are not retired, does that include the inactive?
Correct.
Yes.
Good question. Okay, any public comments?
There are no public comments for this item.
All right, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Aye.
Mr. Prizan?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Bradford, oh, sorry. Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, on to 9C.
Okay, so very similar set of slides here, but now we're talking about the cash balance benefit program. So the first item to kind of note is this is a smaller program than the DB supplement program. So the scale on the graph has changed from billions to millions. Otherwise, a similar result here. So the funded status has improved from 111% last year to 118.2% for June 30, 2023. I also want to note that this, the increase on this program is larger than what we saw for the DB supplement program because the underlying assets here earned about 9.7%, which was higher than the DBS program's 6.5% return. And that is because they had different asset allocations for the fiscal year '22 to '23. But going forward, we shouldn't see these material differences on the return since they're now invested similarly. So similar to what we went through before, we go through the two-step allocation process, starting with the step one allocation. So here, the funded ratio of 118 is represented by the top of that blue bar on the left, and that's higher than the white line, the step one threshold. So we end up the same step one allocation that we had for DBS, a 4.91%. When we move to step two, it's different than DBS in that this has a lower funded ratio. So the bar of the funded ratio after step one is below the step two threshold, that line there. So there's ultimately no additional earnings credits after the step two allocation. So for the cash balance benefit program, the sum is just the step one allocation of 4.91%. So finally, again, we have the historical table here and the recommendation on the far right for 2023 of 4.91% based on the step one allocation. And that would revise the funded ratio to 112.8%.
Thank you, Julie. And that's the recommendation in front of you is to grant an additional earnings credit of 4.91% to the cash balance members.
I see no questions. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prizan?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote? The motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay. Number 10.
We're halfway done. Number 10. So this is the review of the lump sum debt benefit. So just if you recall, last March, we had a discussion regarding the board policy on how to, whether or not, like, whether or not we should recommend an increase in lump sum debt benefit at the request of the board. We included funding thresholds in that policy. So this is the first time that we are basing our recommendation on this new policy. So part of the policy is first to look at the inflation in the last calendar year. So inflation in California 2023 was 3.48%. Now, the policy, if you remember, we wanted the policy, the increases to be tied to our long-term inflation assumption of 2.75. So what the policy says is any increases to be considered by the board will be capped at 2.75%. So because inflation was higher than 2.75, we are, 2.75% is what's being considered now. That 0.73% above, just so you're fully aware, it is now going into a catch-up reserve. So if, let's say, next year inflation is, or this fiscal year inflation is 2%, we would, that 0.73% would now be available in years where inflation is less than 2.75%. So this year, what's in front of you is an increase based on 2.75%. And we've put the 0.73 into a reserve that will be hopefully used in future years if we can bring back inflation closer to 2. Now, the funding threshold says, as long as we are at or ahead of schedule, reflecting the increase being considered, we would recommend an increase. And as you saw before, what Nick showed you, we are above, we are ahead of schedule. So because of this, we are recommending an increase. It's a 2.75% increase. What you see on the slide right now are the current benefit amounts being paid. That's in the second column from the left. The middle column, the bolded numbers, is what is in front of you for recommendation today. Most of the benefits we pay in this case is for retired members when they pass away. So that benefit will go up by about $190 from about $6,903 to $7,093. The other one for active coverage B members, it's always four times what it is for coverage A and retired members that's set in statute. So that would go up by $760. So that is what is in front of you today. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Ms. Hendricks?
I just wanted to say thank you so much. This process this year, it's just so helpful to have things guided by statute, by, you know, inflation, just by metrics that help guide our decisions. So I just thank you for that because, you know, we've been here every year, and it's helpful to have guidance in both our policy and statute to direct our decision. So thank you for that, and I would approve all staff's recommendations.
I second.
Is that okay? Second? Okay, it has been.
What I want.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay.
But put yourself back in so I can get your mic. There you go. Okay.
So thanks again. And I think that's why it's so important for the members who are here. And because you are here, you get to make sure that your proper documents and forms are completed so that when the time comes, that the benefits need to be distributed, that they're distributed quickly and efficiently. And so I just want to make sure that everybody remembers that there are folders online, but I like to have a paper copy. And so this is what I have at home. And I put everything in here. And fortunately, there is a tear-out sheet to tell your family your important documents and where they are, phone numbers to call, and make sure that you do fill out the forms because there is a form called recipient designation form, and it's in hard copy, but it's also online again where you can designate your beneficiaries and your family that you need to do and to always update it when there are life changes for you. I know that with Pension Solutions, we'll talk about that later, but there is going to be an opportunity for them to remind you to where, you know, to make sure that those forms are filled out properly. And then, so that you, we've added a different information too so that we can, in addition to finding, locating your beneficiaries, that there's added information, demographic information, so it's easier to do that. So please, you know, since you're here. So please, you know, since you're here, since you're still walking around and alive, to make sure that you tell all your teachers, friends. That's right, that's right.
Tell them the name of it.
Okay, this is called, this is called survivor benefits, and it's on the microcancers website, but it's also available at your member service centers, and your different organizations should have this information as well. Okay? So all the numbers are on the back, information in here. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, I believe we have public comment on this item?
Good morning, Jennifer Baker with the California Retired Teachers Association. I just wanted to echo the comments that were made by trustee Hendricks, how appreciative we are of the way this new policy is being implemented. It's making the process so much easier to follow, understand, and obviously support. This is something that's so important to our retirees and their families. We just wanted to thank you for the ease of this new process and appreciate how it's moving forward.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 10, the lump-sum debt benefit. So I believe we're ready for a vote? Mr. Garfinkel? Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes. Okay, on to number 11, the actuarial projection for SBMA.
Thank you. And 11 and 12, both of them are related to the inflation protection program that we call the Splinter Benefit Maintenance Account, or SBMA. And I just want to say, this is a, this is a great benefit for our members. When you go outside of California, very few retirement systems provide an inflation protection the way ours is set up. So this is a great benefit. And I just want you to show you that slide, just as a reminder of who is receiving payments from that program this fiscal year. So each fall, we compare inflation to the benefits our member receives. So we look at historical inflation and the, compared to the 2% benefit adjustment they get, and we measure their purchasing power. So today, anyone who retired in calendar year 2005 or earlier is receiving a benefit from the SBMA. So again, this year around August, September, we will measure the purchasing power, and if any new members qualify, they will start receiving payments in October. So this is, I just want you to see, so we have about 108,000 recipients of the, from the SBMA this fiscal year. And again, this year, all the work was done by Julie and Nick on this, but what I wanted to highlight to the SBMA is a little bit different. When we talk about excess resources and how it's funded, you heard from Julie and Nick about the DB, DBS cash balance, and they talked about funded status. The SBMA is measured a little bit differently, where we consider both the assets on hand today, but also future contributions when we look at excess resources. And what we wanted to show you on that slide here, we currently have about $25 billion of assets in the SBMA. That was as of 2023. And the liabilities for the benefits that had been accrued by the members was about $22.8 billion. So we have a, you know, if we measured this like we did for the defined benefit program, we would tell you, we have a surplus of $2.7 billion. But we also look at future contributions for this program from current members, and that adds about $11.2 billion of resources. And when you compare that to the, to the, also future benefits, it results in about $10.7 billion of excess resources. Now, what I want to point out, and it's noted in the staff write-up, is this number, the excess resources, was just shy of $12 billion last time when we did the work two years ago. And it went down, not surprisingly, for two reasons. First, inflation's been higher than what we assumed for the last few years. So anytime inflation is higher than what we expect, it's going to draw, it's going to bring those excess resources down. And we had the implementation of SB 868 that is being reflected in this work. So again, still a significant amount of excess resources. And contrary to the defined benefit program, investment risk is not really an issue for the, for the SBMA because by statute, that program is guaranteed a return equal to our assumed investment return. So right now, it's 7%. So whether we earn zero or we earn 14, that account right now gets credited with 7%. So the real risk that that program is inflation. And in their work, Julie and Nick have included inflation sensitivity, just for you to get a feel of, so right now, those excess resources of $10.7 billion, assume we will have inflation of 2.75 each year in the future. That's the board-approved assumption. Now, we just want you to see, here it shows, what if inflation was 3.25% from now until, you can see, that's the, the blue bar there, we would still have enough resources. Now, we start to run potentially into issues with this program if inflation is 3.75 or 4.25. So again, if inflation were to be 3.75% each year for the next 30 years, we would run out of money in that fund in 2000, close, a little bit before 2054, and at 4.25% about 20 years. And again, that's why we're keeping an eye on inflation on this. But as long as inflation remains around 2.75 or even 3 or low 3% long-term, we will be fine. So what's in front of you with this, so when we do this work every two years, the board has by statute the authority to set the purchasing power anywhere between 80% to 85%. Since having this authority, you've kept the purchasing power at 85% every single time. And once again, because of the excess resources, we feel comfortable recommending to you again to keep it at 85% for the next two years, which will be when we will come back to you again to look at it. So our recommendation is to keep the purchasing power protection from the SBMA at 85%. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Ms. Hendricks?
David, can you put that, or can you guys put that fourth slide up? Okay. So you had said in the previous item that inflation in California was 3.48% this last year.
That was in calendar year, yeah, 2023. For this program, it gets a little complicated. For, for this program, yes, you know us. But so for, for this program, we measure inflation on a fiscal year basis. So as we noted in the item, so the last time we did the work, it was as of 2021. And in those two years, we had 8.3% inflation in '21, '22, and 3.1% in '22, '23. So two years in a row of above 2.75. Now, we, you have yet to see the April figure. Sometime I just, it has several things that go into this calculation, but when I go to the grocery store, I still don't believe. But according to the California measures as of February, inflation in California is between 1% to 2% so far this fiscal year. I'm with you, Sharon?
I don't believe that.
I don't believe it. I think one of the issues, several factors play into this. And if you look at things like, for example, buying a car, those prices have kind of stabilized since. Rent also is a big part of inflation. If you look everywhere in California, rent has stabilized or even gone down in some areas. The issue is that for a lot of our retirees, many of them hopefully own their house. So paying less on rent means nothing. It's really the price of food that impacts a lot of people. So it's kind of a, you know, we're using a measure that reflects many things being purchased by individuals. It might not necessarily reflect what our retired members spend their money most on. But right now in California, we are currently tracking below 2%.
I'm just, I'm thinking back, though, retrospectively. I know that numbers behind us don't necessarily indicate what's in front of us. Investment committee talks about that a lot. But, you know, that number, the three numbers you mentioned in the last three fiscal years are above that 2.75. So I guess I'm just looking at these lines, I'm thinking, looking at trends, and wondering, I guess, you know, given, maybe it will be 1% to 2%, but if it's still like at 3% and 3.5, and that projects out for multiple years, I just, I guess we'll find out next year when we have this report.
But we have, we've also done, Julie and Nick have also done a census analysis in their report, looking at just the next 10 years. And we could have even inflation above 5% for the next 10 years, and we would still be fine in the program. I think what we need to worry about is much longer, it's longer-term inflation. But keep in mind, we, historically, we've gone through periods of high inflation, even if you look at the last 50 years, which would include the run-up of inflation in the, in the late '70s and early '80s. Even if you average that period, it's still in line with our 2.75%. So keep in mind, the 2.75 is a long-term inflation. When we look at this program, we look out right now, 60, 70 years. So we did review this assumption back in January, and we, we felt comfortable to keep it at 2.75. In fact, I would tell you, if you look at all retirement systems in the U.S., or even if you look in California, I think we use one of the highest inflation assumptions in California. Most retirement systems are using 2.5. But we are comfortable with our assumption of 2.75.
Yeah, the cost of diamonds are not going up, so, things like that, so. It doesn't, it doesn't matter as much for people who are retired, but that's all, you know, in the index. So you see that, and you say, yeah, I don't believe that, but yeah, things like that are not going up, so.
Okay, any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, Sharon moved the item. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready for a vote. Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you.
And the last one.
Thank you.
We are there.
Not least, we're almost there.
And this is tied exactly, so this is item 12, so this is tied to 11. So in statute, it says, when we do the, the sufficiency projection for the SBMA, if we identify there are excess resources, it triggers the need for the board to provide a report to the legislature on options, on how to use those excess resources. So we've done that for the last 15 years, ever since that language was added in statute, because we've had excess resources ever since. So just like we did two years ago, we are recommending that we provide two options to the, to the legislature. By statute, we are required to provide one option that would apply only to those who retired before 1999. So that is option one. And again, these are just, if the legislature wanted to do something, again, those are just ideas, it doesn't have to be solely those options. So option one, we've actually mirrored it to be identical to SB 868 that was adopted this year. So again, we've just provided that as an example. Then option two would be if the legislature wanted to increase, increase or even provide you the authority to set the purchasing power higher than 85%. Right now, that's the highest you could go. And we've provided 86% through 90%, because I forgot to mention that in the previous item. With the excess resources we have right now, we could support purchasing power of up to 90% under a long-term inflation of 2.75. So those are the options that we recommend we provide to the legislature. So our recommendation is just to provide those, those options to the legislature, and what we always provide a cover, we always have a cover letter with our, with our, with this. And what we plan to do is to simply mention in our letter that we stand ready to work with the legislature and stakeholders if there was interest to pursue any of these options. So that is what we are recommending, is to simply provide to the legislature those, the options in front of you. Correct.
Okay.
And with this, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So, just, go ahead. So.
Ken, wait, Ken's first. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make a motion, but I'll go ahead, me, you too.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we make these recommendations to the legislature. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, just real quick. So in the letter, you're going to identify the two options that you cited? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Yeah, so we will provide, we always, we always kind of take the, the write-up you have in front of you, and we turn it into a, an official report, and there's a cover letter that will then tell them that we stand ready to work with the, with the legislature and stakeholders if they wanted to implement any of these options.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, then I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Raf, Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all very much for all of that work. Got a lot accomplished there. Nice to meet you, Julie.
I hope Sacramento's lovely for you.
It's a lovely day, at least. Okay, next, we will invite Ms. Martinez Way. We, I was just going to say that. We are going to start with number, well, she was on 15 as well. We were, we're going to start with 15, and then 13, and then 14.
Perfect, okay. Well, I'm gonna do my 15.
Okay.
This is an information item, but if the board chooses to take action on it, of course, they are open to do so. The board has requested this item to present information regarding the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, which has qualified for the upcoming November ballot in California. If passed by voters, the initiative would amend the state constitution to change the rules for how the state and local governments can impose taxes, fees, and other charges. Before you is the information that has been requested. There is quite a bit of content in it, in the attachments that I understand that the board members have read through and digested the information, and I open it up for conversation.
Mr. Prisant?
I find this a very draconian proposition. It will require a supermajority vote to approve any kind of tax or fee by state and local government. It will amend the constitution. It will impact school districts, it'll impact local governments, and obviously, it will impact our retirees. On that basis, I move that we, as a board, oppose this initiative.
Okay.
Second.
Well, okay. We have, okay, um, thank you. We're going to continue going on down the queue. All right, Ms. Hendricks, you are next.
Thanks, Bill, and I, I support all of your comments, and just want to add a few comments, for me, and I just think it's a dangerous measure. I think that the board, I know we typically don't opine on some of these things, but we should oppose this measure. It threatens funding for California schools, and makes it more difficult for students and educators to thrive. It also jeopardizes pensions for hundreds and thousands of school employees who afford their lives and careers into ensuring the next generation has the tools they need to succeed. So I heartily support the board making an opposed position on this particular issue. So, thank you.
Mr. Rafino?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and, yes, California State Treasurer Fiona Ma also opposes this ballot measure, and I have a quote from her, and she says, quote, "This act could pull the rug out from underneath millions of public servants who have worked their whole lives to retire with dignity and put public employees' pension systems such as calcisters at risk," unquote. It's been said already, but just so, for the record, if this measure is approved, it will be retroactive to January 1st, 2022, invalidating more than 100 ballot measures and new law passed back in 2022. This act would cut billions of dollars from state and local government, has been said. It will hinder the ability to fund their pension obligation and other essential services. Additionally, this act would do a disservice to voters, to Californians, to communities that saw the value in a previous ballot, ballot measure that they voted for, retroactively silencing their voice and their right to choose. Therefore, distinguished colleagues, opposing this Therefore, distinguished colleagues, opposing this ballot measure is consistent and in line with our fiduciary responsibility to protect the solvency of CalSTRS, as well as our principles as an organization that values the input of our members and CalSTRS' dedicated professionals. Treasurer Ma, thanks everyone for opposing this hazardous, risky measure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Keely?
Well, I thank the staff for bringing the neutral information to the board. Thank Mr. Prisant for moving that the board oppose this measure. Mr. Rafino, gracias, mil. I'm just going to read the LAO's summary of the quote-unquote fiscal effects. We estimate that this measure would have the following major fiscal effects. Quote, lower the annual state and local revenues, potentially substantially lower, depending on future actions of the legislature, governing bodies, voters, and courts. I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Rafino said. I think it's an existential threat to the viability of this pension fund, and we have an obligation to, fiduciary responsibility, to ensure the trust, retirement, security of California's educators. I think it's within our duty and responsibilities to oppose this measure, and I want to thank you, Ken, Mr. Prisant, for moving action on this item.
I believe we have a few, so I think we're going to limit them to two minutes each.
Our first comment will be from Orville.
Members of the board, Mr. Orville Garrison, representing CTA NEA Retired, also known among my associates as Mr. Anti-Redundancy, will summarize the passionate, impassioned prose that I had intended to share with you. I sense the direction of the board, and so I will simply address you regarding this issue by stating that we do indeed, in CTA NEA Retired, hope that the board will take a position of opposition to the so-called Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. We know it as the Taxpayer Deception Act, and those details seem to be more likely to be expressed as the campaign approaches the November election. So please do oppose this deceptive act. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Kevin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Welch, and I'm here representing the 310,000 members of the California Teachers Association. The so-called Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act is on the ballot in November, and we urge CalSTRS to take an opposed position. More aptly called the Taxpayer Deception Act, this ballot measure is an unconstitutional revision to California's constitution, and it will upend our economy and destabilize state and school districts' budgets and financing. This measure not only makes it harder to increase future government revenues, but would immediately cut billions of dollars in state and local funding because it overturns more than 100 ballot measures and dozens of state laws. It will create chaos and set off a chain reaction of devastating and unintended consequences, putting at risk millions of California residents who rely on a CalSTRS' pensions to make ends meet. The California Teachers Association urges CalSTRS to oppose the Taxpayer Deception Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Mary Kay.
Good morning. My name is Mary Kay Shid, and I would like to echo my colleagues' comments. On behalf of CTA, we urge you to oppose this deceptive ballot measure. Not only will some school districts lose voter-approved revenues that are already tied to specific obligations, but also the measure is designed to constrict the state's general fund, structurally reducing the funding available for education. What's even more insidious is that the chief funders, our real estate interests like Blackstone and Hudson Pacific, that have received California pension fund investments, including from CalSTRS. If passed, the measure will make it harder for school districts and any other governmental agency to meet their obligations. That's why CalPERS took an opposed position, and that's why it's critical for CalSTRS to oppose this measure, too. Opposing the ballot measure, as was mentioned earlier, is consistent and in line with the CalSTRS' fiduciary responsibility to protect the solvency of the pension fund because the measure is a direct attack on the government's ability to meet their obligations and provide critical services that the taxpayers expect. So please join the long list of those in opposition to this dangerous initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Eric.
Thank you for this opportunity to share a statement from the California Retired Teachers Association. My name is Kathy Kinley, and I am the Chair of the Governmental Relations Committee. CalRTA urges you to take an opposed position on this initiative by redefining and micromanaging revenue-creating options at all levels of government. This initiative will impede the ability of state and local governments to serve California's residents, which would have a significant impact on providing public education for our children and funding long-term retirement commitments. CalRTA is additionally concerned with the complex red tape this would create should we need to make any future changes in full funding plan. CalRTA believes that we must advocate for pension equity and sustainability for all present and future CalSTRS members. This initiative intends to harm both current and future generations of retired teachers. CalRTA urges you, and will thank you for opposing this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Eric.
Great, thank you. Good morning. Well, I had, I'll keep my remarks short, because much of what I planned to say has already been well-covered by several board members and my public commentators who preceded me. But Eric Lurie is speaking on behalf of the California State Association of Counties, the League of California Cities, and the California Special Districts Association. Recognize that we are not often, if ever, before this board because our respective constituencies don't largely overlap, but given the scale of the threat of this measure, we thought it was important to urge or suggest that you all oppose this dangerous measure. The measure is long, complicated, and poorly written, but at its core, it will undermine public services for decades to come and represents a dangerous experiment in how our state operates, and is an unconstitutional revision. Thank you for your time and urge your opposition. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Tristan.
Thank you, members. Tristan Brown with the California Federation of Teachers, really here to make sure you know we were here, too, and invoke my favorite, to go along with the Italian vibe, Tuscan word, ditto.
Thank you for your comment. That is the conclusion of public comment for item 15.
Okay, I think you said that was concluded public comments? Yes, okay, we were too busy laughing. All right, thank you. It has been moved by Mr. Prisant and seconded by Mr. Garfinkel for the SPI to take an opposed position on the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. I believe that concludes everyone's questions, and we are ready to vote.
Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
See.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Abstain.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes item 15. We can go back to, are you guys good? Can we get through this and then go to lunch, or do you want a break? No? Go. We're doing it. Okay, let's do it. Item 13. State and federal legislation.
Good morning. Joyce Lee Martinez Way, Director of Governmental Relations, happy to present before the new Chair and Vice Chair this morning, and want to thank the Chair Emeritus. So I have one bill before you today to take a position on. It's AB 2134 regarding the transfer of sick leave for education employees. This bill requires that the request to transfer sick leave between one employer to the next be honored at any point in time that the member or the employee is working for the second employer. It requires the transfer to be made in days for certificated employees, and it applies the provisions to charter schools, probably most significantly, but to some other employers to make sure that they also comply with these provisions. This measure removes barriers that currently exist to transferring sick leave between employers. With that, we anticipate additional sick leave being converted to service credit at the point in time that members retire. So that does add costs to benefits because it would increase those benefits in the formula. And for that reason, with the costs, and because there is otherwise no significant or adverse impact to the benefits or services of the plan, the staff recommendation is to adopt a neutral position.
Questions? I guess we, this is an action item, so we, staff's recommendation. Okay, are there any public comments?
We do have public comment on this item. If we could get a three-minute timer, please. Our speaker will be Susie.
I believe the public comment is on a bill that's in the matrix and not on AB 2134.
Oh, okay. Susie, do you want to wait until we?
Yeah, I'm not commenting on this, actually.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to take a neutral position on AB 2134.
Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Abstain.
And, Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford? Do you care to vote?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay.
And that concludes my presentation on legislation. There are updates in the matrix.
Okay, were you gonna go over anything in the matrix? Because I think that's
So the update that I think is related to the public comment is HR 82, which continues to gain co-authors in Congress. It has not moved at this point in time, but there have been, there has been an additional hearing on the issue.
Okay. Let's go to public comment. Oh, sorry, wait one second. No? Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, Susie.
Thank you. My name is Susie Dixon. I am the President of the California Retired Teachers Association and also the Vice Chair of the National WEP GPO Task Force that has numerous organizations from the Fraternal Order of Police, international firefighters, postal workers, Border Patrol, you name it, many are affected by these unfair penalties. I'm here to show, to report to you today, I was one of the very few who was able to have firsthand witness to the hearing on April 16th. There were only 17 unreserved seats. I sat five and a half hours to get one of those seats because I felt so strongly that our California educators, as many of those affected throughout the nation, needed to have a face. And those 13 members of the Ways and Means Committee seemed to misdirect that it was a hearing on WEP GPO. They had four think tank as their witnesses who gave lots of data, lots of numbers, and did not have people who are affected as witnesses, to the dismay of both authors. We are working together to get a markup, all of the national group, on Tuesdays. Our alerts from CalRTA go to the national group to ask the Ways and Means Committee members for a markup. It is time. Kudos to our own Congresswoman Sanchez. She was the only one who spoke up that the GPO should not be solely on women who have had the ability to stay home, but we are all mothers, and that we all, whether we work full-time, we have that second full-time job as a parent and a mother. Also, one of the other congressmen, Fitzpatrick, also spoke up. It is time for 82 to be brought forth and then fix Social Security. Quit combining them, quit doing policy, it's time to remove these two penalties. So I hope all of our stakeholders who are affected, join in, let the Ways and Means people know they have to act now. And we are up to 319 cosponsors, so we're adding every single week, and the Senate, we're working on Thursdays, is still at 53, but we know that with Chair Schumer on there now, we're going to move forward much faster, so keep the faith. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I believe that concludes item 13, and we can move on to 14.
Item 14, on updates to penalties and interest regulations. We held a 45-day written public comment period. You held a public hearing on January 1st. We did not receive any formal comments at those occasions. However, we did receive informal public comments, and in an effort to make these regulations work the best for our partners and for our staff here, we are making changes to the language, which are noted in the item, and what I'm asking for today is approval to move forward and have a 15-day public comment period for those changes. If there are no changes after that, we will plan to bring the regulations back to you for approval in September to move them to the Office of Administrative Law.
Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Bill has moved, and Ken has seconded adoption of the updated regulations.
Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce Lee. That concludes our agenda up to lunch break, and we're a little bit early, so can we be back, can we be back by one? Can we be back by one? Is that good?
Okay, welcome back to the regular meeting of the CalSTRS Board. We are on item number 16, our Chief Executive Officer Report.
As noted in my report, the emerging risk universe map that was reported on in March has not changed, but instead, this update focuses on one of the more dynamic emerging risks, which is generative artificial intelligence, which we're going to be talking quite a bit about, which is an important topic to the board and an important focus to us internally. Staff recognizes that there are risks and opportunities associated with the use of Gen AI, and part of this focus includes several key business areas that have created a work group to coordinate a three-pronged approach to addressing this emerging risk through responsible governance. And a component of this governance was the development of a policy to shape the principles in relation to any potential use of AI tools, because as you can imagine, as AI takes off throughout the organization and other opportunities, we want to make sure that we have the guardrails put in place and the parameters put in place so that things don't get offshot into different directions without the appropriate oversight responsibilities. We're also going to be talking quite a bit about that at the offsite in July, so it's an exciting and new topic for us to undertake. In our DEI efforts, our project with GuideHouse continues in Phase Two, the Design and Evolve. In late March and April of 2024, GuideHouse met with staff to start creating action plans for the two structural inclusive culture and three behavioral inclusive culture recommendations that were shared in their January board presentation. And also in March, GuideHouse completed information gathering interviews with peer agencies to discuss their DEI efforts. GuideHouse will use the information learned from these meetings to inform CalSTRS' own efforts in this endeavor as well. In March, the Inclusion Council kicked off an internal video series entitled CalSTRS' Voices. I think that some of you have seen some of those videos. These short videos feature CalSTRS staff sharing how they celebrate and observe the monthly DEI topic through their own voice. This series showcases the diverse backgrounds and experiences of the real people that make CalSTRS a unique place to work, and I really love it because I speak about DEI topics every month to CalSTRS, but I really enjoy what others' perspectives are. That's what inclusivity is all about, so I really enjoy those. And just finally, on the headquarters, we don't have the certificate of occupancy yet, but the fire alarm testing, which is the last phase for completion, is in full swing. Happy it's not right now. Happy it's not right now. We kind of delayed because we made some adjustments for, to accommodate our meeting here. But at this time, we expect the project to be complete around May 24th, if not a little bit earlier. We saw the lobby in the cafe yesterday, so that was beautiful. We were able to enjoy and celebrate Chris in that new space. So you'll notice we again add in an item to the consent information agenda at the end of this board material packet to extend the delegated authority to spend an additional $1 million to complete the project to the CEO, to myself, if necessary. And the reason is that we're not, we haven't spent the money, it's just that the authority takes it to a certain point in time, and since that point of time is now going to be before we're actually going to get completion, we need to have the flexibility. We haven't needed the fundy as of yet, but if the, if, heaven forbid it doesn't, but if it does go beyond May into June, we will likely have to go into that $1 million. And that's all I have for my CEO report.
Questions, comments? Are there any public comments?
There's no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you so much for your report. Item number 17, review board priorities for 2425. Hello?
So as Amy gets settled, this, if you remember when we started the strategic plan for the 22 through 25, three-year duration, the board every year looks at the things that they want to participate in, in a more direct leadership role, where they want to have enhanced oversight and reporting relationship to the initiatives or objectives, and where there's this routine governance oversight, that they just want to have regular reports without any more in-depth involvement. We look at this every year. We're getting ready to go build the strategic plan. We're starting the process internally already, and that's going to be part of our July offsite content and is going to be working on the new strategic plan. But this is still looking at the last year of our three-year strategic plan. And there was several recommendations that Amy and I and staff had looked through on how things may have shifted from our view that we want you to consider in moving where your focus would be. Some of it is from enhanced oversight to, or board leadership to enhanced oversight. And that's what the recommendation is. Amy will go over that. This is an information item, but if you are comfortable with the content, we would be willing to move it to an action item.
Sure. Well, thank you, Cassandra. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Amy McDuffie, Mosaic Governance Advisors, your governance consultant to the board, it's a pleasure to be here. Cassandra, thank you for the lead-up. The recommendations are on Attachment One of your meeting book. And at the essence of this topic, this is a sizing exercise. And yesterday, Mr. Keely, you mentioned that board time is the most precious asset, and so you have to use it wisely and be intentional about that. And that's, in fact, what this exercise and this discussion enables you to do. So if you look at these labels, in your strategic plan, you have three goals and 15 objectives. Again, every one of the objectives in your strategic plan is an essential organizational priority. That's why it's on the strategic plan. And remember that the strategic plan also is used to help the organization evolve and move forward. There are many important things that it does on a day-to-day basis, but not everything that's important is strategic. And so that's what the strategic plan is trying to do, is help the organization move forward. Some of the objectives are still in their design phase. And so if you think, we assigned some fancy labels, which I'm very proud of, by the way. But what I'd encourage you to do when you look at Attachment One, routine oversight, think small. Enhanced oversight, think medium. And leadership priority, think large. It's kind of like your normal restaurant menu, right? And all that means is that, remember, your committee and board work plans later we'll talk about, but there are three streams that feed into how the board spends its time. The strategic plan is one of those. So what we're trying to do with this discussion is to size the amount of time that the board needs on your objectives in the strategic plan so that we can refine the board and committee work plans and bring those back to you in July. So as we looked at the priorities, each of the objectives, and we thought, where is each objective in its life cycle? And how much board time do we think might be needed? That's what you're seeing on Attachment One. And the recommendations that we made, you could see, are to Goal 1C, that's the collaborative model. We're recommending that instead of this having a large amount of time, it gets a medium amount of time. That means you'll probably still see it at every meeting, just like you have, because there's still things that you are working with the staff collectively together. With Goal 1, Objective D, growing strategic relationships with policymakers, stakeholders, and partner organizations, you can see that the recommendation there is to take that from a large allocation to a small allocation. And the rationale is in the write-up, but essentially the work that was needed and the thought leadership by the board is, that phase has been completed. And then lastly, if you look at Goal 3, Objective D, strengthen preparedness capabilities to address change and disruptions, there too, we're just saying, let's reclassify that from a large allocation to a medium allocation. So in essence, that's the long and short of what we're recommending. Again, this is a sizing exercise. All of these objectives are important. You'll continue to track and discuss these as a board, but that's what we want to hear your discussion and direction on today. Do you agree with what you see in front of you, or do you have a different view? And if so, what would that be? So Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you for any discussion.
I have one. On Goal 1E, this is for the full board, correct? So, I don't know, I think I'm looking at that as, does that mean that we'll bring more back from the armed committee to the full board? Or is it a separate set of exercises?
That is an excellent question, Madam Chair. So what the strategic plan is capturing is just, and what this is trying to capture is where board time is needed. But to the extent that certain objectives would be the natural remit of your committee, that is where that work will occur. All of your committees, with the exception of appeals and investment committee, are non-delegated committees. And so that means any action that your committees take have to come through the full board for approval. So technically, this is, this is considering your entire board plate, right? Board and committees.
Thank you. Sure. Any other questions, comments? Okay, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no members of the public in the queue for this item.
If there are no recommended changes, I would ask the board to consider. Oh, thank you.
Would someone like to entertain a motion to?
I'll second.
Okay, we haven't moved and seconded to accept this.
Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. That completes item 17. Item 18, we have Compensation Committee Charter, first reading.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Crystal Turco, CalSTRS staff. This is an information item. The, at the March 2024 board meeting, at the direction of then Chair Keely, he directed staff to reestablish the Compensation Committee, which had been subsumed by the full board since January of 2021. The purpose of this item is to request the board review and provide feedback to the Compensation Committee Charter. The purpose of the Compensation Committee is to provide oversight to the system's compensation policies and plan that supports the successful recruitment, development, and retention of key positions to meet the business objectives of CalSTRS. There are no recommendations for changes to the authority composition or meeting sections of the charter. The board may desire to amend the Responsibility Section to maintain oversight of succession planning and the performance criteria and measures that determine incentives at the full board level. The proposed amendments are delineated in Attachment One, which I'd like to go over with the board right now. In the Responsibility Section, staff recommend combining Bullets 1 and 2 to just better reflect the link between this strategy, mission, and organizational objectives. Like I mentioned, on relative to item 9, I recommend removal of the incentive criteria and measures from the Comp Committee and maintain that at the board level to provide increased oversight. And under your delegated authority, the CEO will continue to approve performance measures and criteria at the asset class level. Another recommendation is removal of the Succession Planning Bullet, Bullet 11, from the Comp Committee and maintain that at the board level for increased oversight. And then I recommend an addition that is consistent with other charters that have been approved by the board. Again, this is an information item. If you have questions, I'm happy to take them. Of course, as you can see, Ms. McDuffie is up here with me as well, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Yamamoto?
This looks good. Excuse me, thank you. I just have a teeny thing on parallel construction. So 3, 4, and 12.
Okay.
And that's all. Just to rewrite it so that it's.
Thank you, Ms. Yamamoto.
Thank you.
It's hard when you're board teachers.
Ms. Perrault?
Yeah, first of all, I greatly appreciated that suggestion. Somebody who enjoys wonderful grammar. I just actually have a quick question, and again, maybe this was answered in a previous meeting that I wasn't, hadn't attended to, but, so this, just so I understand, this committee used to exist, it kind of has gone away, and we're talking about bringing it back. And so the composition part, where it talks about a minimum of three members, how is that, or how are we going to go about selecting those members and sort of what that mixture of members might look like? I don't, it's not defined in here, so I don't know if maybe there was a process in the past, or if that's been discussed as part of the full board.
Sure, if I may answer. So the board leadership, the board chair actually has the authority to appoint members of the committee. And if, there's a policy in the governance manual that talks about duties of the chair and appointments to committees, and there's some criteria that are typically considered by the chair as they make appointments to all committees.
Chair also sent, had a form for the other participants to sign up on who wants to sit on which committee, so that will be how the committees will be constructed for the next year. Fill those out, and then they will make the final selections and appoint the chairs and vice chairs of those committees.
I appreciate that. I just, again, because we're kind of bringing something back that didn't exist, I just was mindful about, you know, how the composition would look as far as representation across the board. Like I said, newbie question, just trying to get an understanding.
Show her where to sign up.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Gallegos had a question?
Yes, I just have a question on the work plan.
Work? That's next. That's next.
Okay. I will hold off then.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on the Compensation Committee? Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, would anyone like to?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this was the work plan for the Compensation Committee.
This is the charter.
It's the Charter for the Compensation Committee.
So, oh, I'm sorry, we're still on item 18. Apologies.
That's okay. Would anyone like to entertain a motion to pass? Okay, Sharon has moved approval.
Second.
Ken has seconded. We'd be happy to vote on this.
Before we do that, can I just ask?
Yes, of course.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the fact sheet attachment forward to that. So then the responsibilities, all those will conform with the charter that we just approved, that we're approving. Okay.
Yes.
With the parallel construction included.
No other questions, so I think we're ready.
Mr. Garfinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes item 18. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 19 is the draft work plan for the Compensation Committee, which will reflect suggested key activities for the Comp Committee in the upcoming performance year, including the initiation of the solicitation and selection of the board's primary compensation consultant, governance of the incentive compensation program, which is the evaluation of incentive performance and trigger events relative to the board's authority outlined in the Comp Policy, and a compensation education session designed to assist the committee with their oversight of the compensation strategy. This is a draft work plan. I would like to already make one recommendation for a change. As I have been informed, July is a very busy meeting. I will suggest shifting the initiation of the compensation consultant solicitation from July to September. But with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to take questions.
Okay, let's go to Ms. Gallegos.
Thank you. My question is on the compensation consulting services solicitation. Is that to, is that a, just a renewing of an existing contract we have currently? So looking, doing another RFP for a service that we already utilize and that we saw in the pre-lunch meetings? Or is this something new?
This will be reissuing the RFP to actually hire a compensation consultant.
Okay. Thank you.
What, I just wanted to have a clarification. I believe the investment performance impact on incentive pay was at the full board and would, I think we always had it at the full board level, I thought. Something that the full board would talk about, wasn't it? Isn't that how we?
We go over.
I'm trying to think of timing because of how we're.
Was it during comp, or was it at the full board?
So if there's no other comp items, we probably would want to just do it with the full board. Yeah. So we might want to make that change. It's a shorter work plan than what we.
Okay.
Well, now we have July's stuff going into September. Did you make that?
Okay, Mr. Keely?
Okay.
You know, I'm glad that we're reconstituting the Compensation Committee. I think it will be in line with our being efficient, effective, and then reporting up obviously to the full board. And I'm excited about having a conversation about what's working really well with the compensation policy and language that we currently have, what we as a board, because so many changes on the board, we have policy, but we also have so many new people on our board to really fully understand our philosophy, our approach, and also the changing dynamics of how people work, hybrid work, satellite offices, that there are many variables post-COVID that, speaking for myself, I think we want to explore how those are looked at in the industry, as to whether or not they are actually considered a form of being an employer of choice. So I think it will be a good opportunity for the committee to explore these topics to ensure that we're. to ensure that we're continuing to attract and retain the highest quality people that we possibly can, and not having it consume the full board's focus. So I think it's, from a governance perspective, it's good. So thanks for bringing this forward and recorded the conversations in the coming year.
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I just, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Keely, for your comment. I think, just briefly, the other thing from a timings perspective that will work extraordinarily well is that, as Ms. Licknox said, you're about to do a strategic plan, to conduct a strategic planning exercise. And so if you roll that forward, that would take effect July 1 of 2025. And it's always good, when you think about compensation, what's the future vision of the organization, and what are you trying to achieve? And so having that refreshed at a time that you can start to explore these topics is a really wise move, and I think it's coming together nicely. So I just wanted to add that from a governance perspective. Thank you.
So are we ready to adopt this, or should we wait until changes are made?
We're going to actually bring all the work plans in the, to the July meeting for them all to be for adoption, so we'll make these changes and.
Okay. If there are no further comments, then we'll move on to number 20.
So this is, this is the work plan for the full board, and it has the bulk of the work is routine business operations with some of the areas that we routinely bring back, subject to looking at your contracts and our cybersecurity education, your actuarial evaluations, the adoption of the budget, all of those things. And then included in this are other things that are outside of just what's return, I'm sorry, routine, which is some of the educational components and areas where it will enhance the, your oversight and the governance responsibilities that you hold. One of the things I just wanted to make a comment on was, in the March meeting, we have the enterprise risk management report. We're going to be moving that to the ARM committee, because the ARM committee adopted the oversight responsibilities, and then we'll report out to the full board. So that will be moving from this work plan to that committee work plan. And with that, I could take any input, or we can, I will continue to gather input as we build up to the July meeting.
I don't see any comments or questions from the board. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to item 21. Pension Solution Project Update.
First and foremost, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, many congratulations.
Thank you.
And there are a couple of new board members. This is just like I think Cassandra mentioned in the work plan, this is a regular meetings, we provide the update on the project. Anthony and Chris provide the full-blown updates. Anthony?
Thanks, Ashish. Good afternoon, members of the board. Anthony Sweeney, Pension Solution Project Director, and I'm here to provide the latest update on the project. I won't see you until September, so I tried to cram a lot into today's presentation.
Twenty minutes.
Yeah. So today, I'll provide you a verbal update on HR activities, then jump into our overall schedule and testing metrics, and share with you an update on our user acceptance testing activities. And I'll be introducing you to our project management office, share with you how our project is managing risk, and then share our budget and contract updates. So I'll start first with just a brief verbal HR update. Since our last board meeting, we have really worked on filling positions on our transformation readiness team as we inch closer to go live. We hired a new analyst on the training and development team, and we hired two analysts on our change management team recently. We also hired our new program administration manager in our project management office. She oversees budget, risk, and the project administration teams. Estelle Champlain is here with us today. If you want to stand, Estelle. Estelle comes to us from Cal HR, and previous to that, a career in the Air Force. So we're happy to have Estelle on board, and she fills the 15th of our 16 leadership positions on our project, and our last position is pending finalization. So we're excited to soon have a full project leadership team. So diving into our project metrics, this is our overall schedule metric that I introduced to the board at our March meeting. As you can see, the overall project at the top there remains in a green status, which is a positive sign. Also displayed are the statuses of our five most critical work streams. As a reminder, these aren't just arbitrary colors assigned to the work streams. Our project schedule contains tasks with task durations and completion percentages, and the colors are generated based on the actuals versus expected of those. We are reporting a green status on four of the five work streams. However, we remain yellow, in a yellow status for our user acceptance testing. At our last board meeting, I reported that our yellow status was primarily due to our UAT test plan being behind schedule, and I'm happy to report that we did finalize that test plan on April 19. But we do have several activities related to preparing test environments and test scripts that started late and are responsible currently for the yellow status. While the tasks are delayed, our teams are actively working on all aspects related to user acceptance tests, and we are confident we will get back on track and start our UAT as planned in October. The key activities we're focused on right now in UAT are writing our test scripts and validating the time it will take to get through our nine-month UAT test period. The subsequent metrics are measuring our current system integration test progress, as you've seen before. We have six total test streams in SIT and just completed stream three on April 8, so we're more than halfway done. This chart illustrates the plan over the entire 18-month SIT period and the estimated plan of 3,700 test scripts. As of the end of March, we had planned to pass 1,934 test scripts, and we're a little below target, passing 1,894, or 40 short of our target. The next slide shows a more recent view through April 14, a weekly view, and we reduced that gap to 28 scripts. But even better news, as of last week, we reached a huge milestone. We passed our 2,000th test script, and as of Monday of this week, we've actually slightly exceeded our scheduled pass rate, passing 237 scripts over 225 expected. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but we'll take any amounts over our planned amounts. So passing these test scripts is a huge accomplishment, but we also want to ensure the quality of the test scripts. We do this by having our CalSTRS team review test scripts for accuracy before they are executed by Sagitech, and once the script is passed, our CalSTRS team again reviews and validates the results of those passed test scripts. These were steps added to verify the quality of the code and increase the confidence the system will be ready when we begin our UAT. These additional steps have been extremely valuable in the process, and while we do find issues as a result, they are being discussed and resolved collaboratively in a timely manner with the various teams. Our CalSTRS team is doing an amazing job at keeping a fast pace of these reviews and validations while also balancing other project work and production workload as well. This next metric shows the expected number of defects we have planned for and the actual number we have identified over the 18-month duration. The following view, again, blows it up to the last three months of activity, so you can better see the planned and actuals are extremely close, which is a positive sign for our quality and for the resources that are allocated to resolve these defects. The orange line at the bottom tracks our critical and high defects, which are the most important to resolve in order to get our test scripts passed. You can see that line has remained fairly steady over the last three months, but it can vary slightly depending on where we are in the various testing stream. The last slide highlights all the outstanding defects Sagitech currently has to resolve across all test efforts. Previously, I just showed you SIT data, but this also includes batch, interface, and data conversion. This has remained fairly steady, and a large number of those defects you see in that blue area for application development are defects that are targeted to be fixed in future streams of testing. So as you know, we've been working on building up our project management office, and our PMO serves as a hub for driving project management best practices, processes, and governance across the Pension Solution project. This slide highlights the main roles of our project office and primary functions. Our schedule team focuses on tracking progress and ensuring activities are on time and monitoring the overall health of the project. Our deliverables team is tracking the timely completion of the work of our vendor partners. Our risk and issue team collects and assesses risk data to make sure they are mitigated and managed properly. Our quality team is ensuring standards and processes are followed, and our resource team coordinates personnel and budget needs across the project, but also across the organization in multiple branches and divisions. These are some of the recent accomplishments of our PMO. You have or will see some of their output that I'm sharing today. The overall project schedule metric I showed you earlier is a direct result of developing and rebase lining an integrated master project schedule. The next topic I'll cover related to risk will highlight our project efforts to measure and mitigate risks aligned with our enterprise risk management team. We have also recently formalized our deliverable management process, improved our metrics reporting, and streamlined our resource supply and demand efforts. This is extremely important as our teams across the organization are needed to assign more resources to various testing efforts, training, change management, and business transition as we get closer to go live. I'd just like to take a minute to recognize our PMO team, ask them to stand and be recognized for their hard work, and it's led by our state project manager, Tammy. There are more people doing all this work, but those were the brave enough to come today. So on any project, managing risk is critical to monitoring the overall health of the project, and our enterprise risk management team presented to the board in March, and they highlighted 10 risk categories across the organization with risk nine, transformational change, capturing the risks around the Pension Solution project. Behind information security, the project is the second highest risk in the organization. Not that I necessarily want to draw your attention to the project, but I did want to draw your attention to how we are mitigating the risks associated to the project. These are six sub-risks associated to the project, varying from will we be successful to how are we preparing end users for adoption. These dials highlight the residual risk scores of our six sub-risks as of June 30, 2023, prior to us embarking on the new Destination Go Live project schedule. And then on the bottom, you have the current residual risk scores of those sub-risks nine months into our project schedule. Thank you, Mr. Peral. Showcasing my learning from my recent annual risk and compliance training, residual risk is the inherent risk, which is the risk if we don't do anything, minus our mitigation strategies, and that equals these residual risk scores. As you can see, we have reduced sub-risk A through E, some significantly, and have maintained a low risk level on sub-risk F. The scores are determined by the impact, probability, and velocity scores assigned to each risk, and are calculated by using ERM's methodology of adding the probability and velocity score and multiplying it by the impact score. As we have progressed successfully through the project testing efforts, developed more consistent policy and procedures, and improved our communications, it's allowed us to enhance our mitigations and reduce our scores across the board. These are updated on a quarterly basis, and I'll keep you apprised of any significant changes, good or bad, as we approach go live. This last slide provides an updated view of our budget as of 2/29/24, where we had the finalized data. Our approved budget to go live, as a reminder, is 523.1 million, and we have expended 356.5 million of that to date, which leaves us the 166.6 million for the remaining 19 to 20 months prior to go live, which is on target with what we're expecting. And for the fiscal year, we were budgeted 87.2 million, and through eight months, we are also on target with our expected plan. So before I turn it over to Chris, I did want to highlight a contract approval related to Pension Solution. That'll be before you in item 23D. The project made a strategic decision as we began our new schedule to move all our on-premise data center workload into the cloud utilizing Amazon Web Services. Our CalSTRS team is working closely with our Sagitech partners to complete this migration by the end of this month. It's been an aggressive timeline, but the migration's been going well. However, as a proactive contingency, we have created a non-competitive bid contract with Quest Media and Supplies, who is our on-premise data center host, that would only be executed if needed if our migration to the cloud was delayed for any reason. The current contract ends at the end of July, so it's necessary to come to you now for approval to be safe. Besides the actual migration of our data center workloads, which is happening by the end of the month, we also must decommission the on-premise servers, which includes a variety of activities that'll go beyond May. We believe we are on schedule with all these activities before the July contract end date, but this contingency contract is for 1.7 million that would allow us to go through July 2025 if needed. I'll also add that if any contingency is needed, we do not need to utilize the full 1.7 million, but rather on a quarter-by-quarter basis, so we don't have to commit to the full contract price, even if we experience partial delays. So that'll be before you soon. In closing, I just want to thank our Sagitech team for their collaboration in making such great progress with us, and acknowledge many of their leadership and executive team who have joined us in the audience today, if you guys want to stand. Thank you. We look forward to our continued success with the Sagitech team going forward. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions. Pass it to Chris when he's ready.
Questions so far? We go to Chris. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Caboti with Guide House and our independent oversight update. We concur with the data and the metrics that Anthony provided today. For system integration testing, as he showed, overall execution remains on track, as you saw, and Sagitech's continued to be able to show us their ability to catch up when they do fall a little bit behind the line. So those are all good signs. And so again, overall, we're comfortable with the execution rate and where we're at there. From a defect perspective, we saw that the number of defects are also within the bounds of what's expected and what's planned for, which is a positive thing. More importantly, I think, from a qualitative perspective and a qualitative assessment side, the types of defects that are being found in discussions with Sagitech and the team are also within the boundaries of what would be expected at this point in time. So in other words, there's, the defects that are being found are not those that would give you pause or concern about the system's ability to process those functions that are being tested. That's not to say that couldn't happen down the road with additional testing. However, again, to date, the testing that has been done has found defects again that don't cause that level of alarm. So again, that's a positive from our perspective there. That's a qualitative component that we think is important, and it's something we'll continue to monitor. Regarding UAT, you saw on the chart that it's yellow. Regarding UAT, you saw on the chart that it's yellow. And so we've had conversations with the teams, the UAT team, the PMO, the leadership team to understand the drivers for that. It's coming directly from the schedule, as Anthony mentioned, and some of those got a late start. Some of the things aren't quite where they expected to be at this point in time for the reasons he mentioned. The main thing they're working on, and he talked about it a little bit, was the development of the test cases themselves. So that's really where the focus is, is getting those test cases built for UAT. They're complex, they're large, they're going to cross multiple business areas, and so it's a significant effort to do that. And so again, what we're looking at there is from the resourcing side, making sure that the team has capacity to do that writing. And so there are mitigation steps in place for that. There are also the people that Anthony mentioned are also working on the validations for system integration testing and the test case review for SIT. So there are multiple test phases that that team is working on. So again, making sure that they have the right number of people, and as those test cases get started, using that data to say, yeah, it took this long to do this numbers, so let's extrapolate that and figure out if the plan is feasible and if we can get the current scope done by the schedule that we have planned. So again, as those test cases get written and we have that additional data, we'll be able to do a more detailed assessment of that and see how that's looking. But it's something, again, that we're paying attention to. On the vendor management side, I think Anthony did a good job of explaining that the collaboration with Sagitech and their team has been positive, and it's going well. We've seen that with the other vendors as well, VIP on the PMO side and Linea on the UAT support vendor side. Linea is doing a, building some documentation to help the test cases for UAT be written in a more simplified manner and an easier way to keep that going. The main thing is, you saw those charts that were written a while ago that had the accountability and the responsibility and who's on for what for all of these activities with the different vendors, making sure that those stay within those bounds and that those vendor teams are relied on for their expertise is important. And so that's, again, something we're aware of and watching. But overall, from a vendor management perspective, we see those relationships positive at this point. And yeah, and then, you know, overall, I'm comfortable with where things are from that perspective. I think the PMO has been doing a good job of attacking those business processes. Anthony showed what they did around risk management, and we think that was a huge bonus to get that into a standardized format that everybody can understand, and we're all kind of talking the same language there. So yeah, so we're happy with that as well. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions yet.
Okay. Miss Yamuro.
Hi. Hi, thanks. Those numbers look good. Numbers look good. It makes me happy. I just wanted to just ask just a basic question about user acceptance testing. UAT is what everybody's been talking about. And so, so does that mean that the teams are working on that process and checking out how a user would be doing that? I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but you are doing the testing. The team is doing the testing, and the team is the Pension Solution team. So how are the business areas being involved in that testing? Are they involved at all at this point?
They are, Karen. They are the UAT testing. So system integration test is mainly run by the vendor. I mean, we're partnering with them in SIT, but they execute and pass all the test scripts. For UAT, it is the user acceptance testing. So they will pass us the code, and our business team, our end users, will be executing those test scripts, and they're strung together to more test a real function that they'll be doing day-to-day in their business activity. So it is the end users from our business areas that are executing and will be passing those. We don't start execution of that until October, and it goes through June of next year.
So it's a regular process, a routine process that goes on? And then, so if the business areas are, do what the vendors are, not do, but they comply with what the direction of the vendors are doing, and then that's how it kind of goes into all the numbers that are coming out?
Right. So in June or July, we'll turn back to the business area. I say now you can test it out. So whatever they are doing in the start mainframe, they will be start testing in our latest and greatest this application. So that's the UAT. So they will give us a green light that, okay, things are moving along.
We'll start giving you new numbers because there's about 500 test scripts in user acceptance testing, and then instead of showing you this, I'll show you the progress of UAT and what our business users are experiencing.
But they've been involved all along?
They have been, and they're involved in writing these test scripts right now that are going to be used. They're a little bit different from the SIT scripts. Those are, those test a little more compartmentally, if you could say, where UAT will test end-to-end functions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Bill Perez, Chief Benefits Officer. Since you mentioned the involvement of the business, it's probably worth noting that hand-in-hand with user, with system integration testing, currently we're adding an additional layer, which is validation of the past test cases by the business in advance of user acceptance testing. So it's not a normal part of the software development lifecycle. Normally, the vendor will pass over to the business at the transition to user acceptance testing. We're adding this additional layer, if you will, of validation ahead of UAT.
Okay. Good. Good. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, are there any comments from, are there any public comments?
There's no public comment for this item.
Changed the voice on us. I was not ready for that.
I just want to make sure you know that our relationship with the vendor, I think Chris and Anthony is saying they are here, as well as the team, overall, the morale and all, I think is a lot of uplifting and from where we came. There's a long way to come here, but I think the things are looking great in this. Thank you.
The teamwork is incredible. That's why we're moving along.
And you know, Lisa was just pointing out yesterday, 6 o'clock, someone is getting out and say, hey, 6 o'clock, you're still here? And Anthony was here in the office, you know, and the times are.
Thank you all very much. We're very happy this is moving along.
Thank you so much for your support. Thanks.
Of course. Okay, that brings us to item 22. Update on integrating sustainability principles across the enterprise.
So good afternoon, board members. This is, as Ms. Bradford said, your update on integrating sustainability principles across the enterprise. So in 2021, we created an overarching view of sustainability at CalSTRS and have worked to align our investment and our enterprise efforts. And in April of 2022, the board requested regular updates on these alignments. Our priorities are path to net zero, sustainable operations, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we've covered DE and I pretty extensively through regular board updates. So today, Scott Chan and Kirsty Jenkinson will join me to speak to the alignment of our net zero and sustainable operations. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott to get us started.
Great, thank you, and good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Scott Chan. I'm the Deputy CIO. And I'll just start with a quote from my grandmother, actions speak louder than words. And so I'm very happy and pleased to say that you heard the update yesterday on our plan and path to net zero, decarbonizing the portfolio by 2050 from Kirsty and team. And today, you're going to hear more from Lisa on the enterprise. But as Lisa was just saying, another thing that I'm really proud of is that we're integrating this across entire organization investments and the Sustainable Enterprise team. And I think that that really sends a powerful message. We can walk the talk. And so when I approach partners and when we approach vendors, we're not only decarbonizing our portfolio, but the entire enterprise. So that sends a powerful message. A couple of examples, also, we're trying to unify the staff, and the teams have teamed up to, for example, over the last summer, I believe it was, we had an investment branch, it wasn't an academy, but a presentation from ISO, the enterprise consultant. And it was very instructive. On the momentum of that, we're taking that to what we call our Investment Academy. And you might be wondering, well, what's Investment Academy? It's us having brown bag lunches and training every new staff member on each of the asset classes so that they get a great understanding of what's happening across the organization, but also our strategic priorities, such as the path to net zero. And I believe there's aspirations to take that and hopefully bring that across the entire enterprise to really embed it into our culture.
Couple more points just to sort of, sorry, I'm Kirsty Jenkinson, the Director of Sustainable Investment and Stewardship Strategies. Nice to be with you today. Enjoy that. Just building on a little bit of what Scott said as well, I think the really fun part about the integration that's happening as well is not only on the training, because this is a learning and development for all staff, both in investments and enterprise, but it's also how we integrate the teams. I don't see her in the audience, but Rhonda Linsky is one of our leads on the enterprise sustainability side. She joins all of our Sustainable Investment and Stewardship Strategies team meetings and our quarterly updates. She's a great, she won't mind me saying this, plus one, we call her because she's our extra special, extra team member. So she is, you know, allowing us to sort of share information really regularly between the teams, which has just been a huge benefit, I think, or certainly from our side. I think the other thing to remember is that on the reporting side, we are also trying to be very thoughtful about how we integrate enterprise reporting through the sustainability report, not only in terms of the content. We provide content from the investment side into our enterprise sustainability report, but also how we think about the frameworks that guide our reporting, both the GRI and the International Sustainability Standards Board's reporting standards. And then the final thing, as Scott mentioned, it's the education and the training piece. So just wanted to give you those sort of really tangible examples of how this is happening in practice and how it's evolved in the last couple of years, which has been great fun.
And then, as an enterprise, we're working to understand our own organization's carbon footprint and developing our own internal net zero strategy, somewhat like the board's goal for the investment portfolio. So we're working closely with the Department of General Services in our ability to comply with two different Senate bills related to net zero emissions. The first requires renewable energy resources and zero-carbon resources to supply 100% of the electricity procured to state to serve all state agencies by December 31, 2035. And then the second requires state agencies to aim to achieve net zero emissions of greenhouse gases resulting from their operations no later than January 1, 2035, or feasibly thereafter. And because we've been reporting our Scope 1 and Scope 2 greenhouse gas emissions to the state since 2005, we are really ahead of the curve in our ability to comply with both of these bills. In fact, from 2010 to 2022, we've reduced our net emissions by 83% or 1,800 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. We've done this through a number of different things, but one is through building retrofits, like changing all of our lighting in our headquarters to LED lighting, and by purchasing renewable energy credits, which are called RECs, which are issued when one megawatt hour of electricity is delivered to the grid from a renewable energy source. So when the HQE comes online and is in full operation, we expect significant clean onsite energy generation from the solar panels that we've installed on the property. And although we won't know exactly how much energy will be produced, we do know that we will not have to purchase as much electricity or these RECs that we've been purchasing as well. In addition to Scope 1 and 2 emissions, and because CalSTRS supports full disclosure of emission reporting, we are beginning to look at our Scope 3 emissions that are produced from up and down activities through our value chain. We're starting with estimating our employee commute, our business travel, and the energy that's used in our member service centers. Methods for accounting for Scope 3 emissions are still evolving, but we thought it was really important from a transparency perspective to add our estimates in our latest sustainability report based on calculation methods that are available to us. We're also establishing sustainability measures to track our progress using industry frameworks. We're focused on our seven key topics. The first is member retirement, education. Second is our CalSTRS funding progress, privacy and information security, path to net zero, sustainable operations, employee and human capital management, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And finally, to increase our internal staff knowledge on sustainability, we provide sustainability roadshows during staff meetings, and we're developing education modules and communication for fiscal year 2425. We want to make sure everybody that works in the organization understands what our sustainability goals are and how they do and can contribute to those. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
I know that's a lot. Questions? I don't see any questions here. That's just amazing. Thank you. Are there any public comments?
There are no members of the public, and thank you.
Okay, go ahead, of course.
One note of thanks. I do want to acknowledge Rhonda Linsky, who is our Corporate Sustainability Coordinator, and Heather Conway, who actually works in our facilities team and does all those sustainability efforts within the organization and the headquarters. She's responsible for all of our certifications, like LEED certification and WELLS certification, of course, the Facilities Operations Team and Communications, who are really a big partner in all of our publications and our reports, making those look pretty and really thoughtful. So.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, question? Go ahead.
I hate to let you get out of here without having at least one question. To what extent do we share the way we're approaching this as an institution with some of our partners and people that we do business with? As an example of how, as I think you said yesterday, or maybe even today, Scott, you know, you walk the walk and you just don't talk it.
Yeah, well, I know in all the meetings I have, and I typically meeting with many of the top partners of our organization, I'm sharing with them that we are walking the talk, and that is such a unified approach. It's a powerful message that we can deliver to them. I think a skeptic would say that they're also watching us, right, as well, because they want to see not only what we're saying, but what we're doing as well. And we are very, very widely watched in the industry. So whether we are out there, you know, saying it and talking, you know, talking to, directly to the partners and encouraging them to do the same, they're also, you know, watching our actions as well closely.
I was just going to add from this side as well, that I think it gives us a real credibility also, is when we're engaging the largest companies in the world, obviously, through our influence and our stewardship activities. Because if we can go to them and say, we also are going through this across all elements of how we invest, but also how we manage our company, it makes us a much more legitimate, incredible challenger to how they are also doing the same. So it makes us a lot more authentic, I think, which is great.
And do you find that in terms of, and I know in your world, there is a lot of co-investing with other entities, and do you find that this is an attractive element, especially in global climate change, in bringing other partners in that say, you know, they're of like mind?
Oh, yeah, I can't, that's such a good point to emphasize, actually. Thinking about some of the initial partnerships that we've made in the CIS portfolio, the particular private portfolio where we're looking to expand our investments in low-carbon solutions, that showing that alignment of sincerity about the need to decarbonize both from an investment but also from an enterprise level, absolutely, I do think that's been helping us become a partner of choice because people realize that we're very serious about this. And yeah, certainly, a number of the deals that we have been able to position ourselves for have been aided by this. Absolutely.
Right. Well, thank you.
And I could just add from an enterprise perspective, we are, other state agencies look to us for best practices because we are so ahead of the curve. And I also want to mention, it's a recruitment tool. There's a lot of people that actually come to this organization, and we hear from them during new employee orientation, that one of the things that drove us, drove them to CalSTRS is our sustainability goals, because it's important to people. And I think that, you know, we do the walk the walk, and people want to be involved in an organization that's doing so.
If I just may add, you know, because I think this is an important, but at least to me, it's important, I'll let you be the judge. But the fact that this, and I feel great kinship with this place because of this, has really committed itself to not only looking at, you know, climate change as a sustainable element of investment, but also DE and I and all of those other factors, is also a great recruiting tool for this generation, this next generation. I mean, people are looking for a job where they can live and work in a place that is meaningfully aligned with their values. And so I think that's, it's great. It's great that you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, I see no one else in the queue. Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda. Item 23, items A through F. Need to vote, right? Yeah. Does anybody want to pull anything before we? Does anybody want to pull anything before we agree to the consent agenda?
Want to quickly note, too, you have five motions coming out of the Armed Committee.
Everyone should have gotten those papers. Thank you for bringing that up. Did everybody take a look at those? Yeah, we did. Roll call? Yes, okay. Everyone get a chance to look at that real quick? Okay. No pulls, then let's vote on the consent agenda.
Mr. Garkeinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Prazant?
Yes.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Perrault?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford? The consent agenda passes.
Okay, thank you. So the information items, we should also have in those papers, correct, for everyone to look at? Just make sure that you have seen them. Which brings us down to number 27. Review of information. It's just information, we're not voting on it, so. No. So that's number 27, no information requests, right? Okay. Number 28, draft agenda for next meeting.
This is just the agenda for the offsite in July, and you can see we have regular business items in the, on the first day, we're going to start a half-day. And then we have some really interesting topics that we're going to be discussing on geopolitical risks, AI and innovation. So it'll be really interesting. And then the third day, we're going to be going into the strategic planning. So that's what the construct of the offsite agenda is shaping up to look like. It'll be a really good meeting.
Okay, Ms. Yamamoto.
Just a real quick one, thank you. The location says Monterey. Do we have an exact location yet, or is that not available?
It's going to be at the Intercontinental.
Say it again?
Intercontinental.
Okay.
Yeah, members of the public are invited, yes. I want to make sure that they knew. Intercontinental.
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to be connecting with all of our stakeholder groups to give them, there's a number of different hotels right in the vicinity. So I know things get booked up, it's interesting that things get booked up easier in July than they were, than they did in October when we switched. So we have room blocks, and then we have some other hotels identified.
Okay. Thank you. Last item, number 29, opportunity for statements from the public.
We do have a member of the public who'd like to speak?
Who's that? Twice, you know, two days, you get to see me cry. Dana Dillon, CTA NEA retired. Share, I'll start with Denise, I guess. Denise, Karen, congratulations on your new offices, and I look forward to working with you in that capacity. And then to Harry and Sharon, and your time as leadership on this board has been amazing. You guys have done a terrific job, and I'm really happy that you've given your time and your efforts and your love to the system and to all our members. And so thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Frank? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Of course.
Thank you. So May kicks off the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so which, as you all know, commemorates and celebrates the rich contributions and history of the Asian Americans and Pacific Islander. So gives us an opportunity to spotlight, to say congrats to our very own colleagues, starting with our newly-elected chair, Vice Chair, Karen, and of course, to Ken, and to the entire community of AAPI staff and teachers across the state.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
Why did I say Frank?
Okay. With no further, seeing no further comments, that concludes our Teachers Retirement Board meeting.
Congratulations.
Thank you. What time would you like to start?
Why don't we start Benefits and Services at 2:30?
Okay, 2:30, Benefits and Services.